Good evening, everyone. The May 11th, 2020 virtual meeting of the Anaronda County Council is now in session. Among other things this evening, we will hear and vote on several bills that were previously postponed to the COVID-19 health crisis. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Rodvian?
Present.
Ms. Hare?
Present.
Ms. Lacy?
Present.
Mr. Volkey?
Present.
Mr. Pruski?
Here.
Ms. Fiedler?
Present.
Pickard?
Present.
Ms. Smith, Madam Auditor?
Present.
Ms. Schuet, Legislative Council?
Present.
All are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please pause for the invocation. Mr. Volkey will lead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before the invocation, I would ask that you all join me in a moment of silence for those we've lost and those who are still fighting the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you. Also, thank you to all the essential employees, first responders, and healthcare workers for your sacrifices. Please pray in a manner consistent with your faith this evening, as do the same. God, we are living in uncertain times. Fear is around us. It's easy to focus on the negative, but you've given us so many blessings. Help us to focus on what unites us, divides us, and through it all, we know that you are bigger than imporal things. Please show us your presence, guide us, lead us in wisdom and truth with an eye toward the command to love one another. Amen.
Ms. Fiedler will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The county attorney has asked that I read the following statement. The Maryland Open Meetings Act, a state law, requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. General provisions, Article Section 3-102(c). The virtual format of this meeting of the county council is due to the COVID-19 emergency and is necessary in light of the serious health risks associated with public gatherings, well as the governor's various executive orders limiting public gatherings. While virtual meetings type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to assure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the media, broadcast, excuse me, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the and allowing written public comments to the legislation be filed with the clerk and considered by the council. The county office of law has appined that the public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public and therefore complies with the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has said that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in a form, review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. Because this is a virtual meeting, we cannot provide reasonable seating facilities for the news media and we cannot physically be located in Annapolis, the county seat. May I have a motion to suspend Rules 3103 and 3106?
So moved, Rodvian.
May I have a second?
Councilman Pruski, second.
Madam Secretary, will you call the roll on that motion, please?
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion to suspend Rules 3-104 and 3-106 is passed.
Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend Rule 3-105? As we cannot provide reasonable seating for the public and as written testimony will not be read into the record due to the high volume of testimony received, written testimony for the, for all bills has, have been reviewed by the council members and will be posted on for the public to view, and the numbers in support and opposition will be announced.
Councilwoman Rodvian, so moved.
May I have a second?
Pruski, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to suspend Rule 3-105 is we cannot provide reasonable seating for the public and as written testimony will not be read into the record due to the high volume of testimony received. Written testimony for all bills have been reviewed by the council members and will be posted online for public view and the numbers in support and opposition will be announced is passed. Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communication on any sub not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public to read into the record?
No, Madam Chair, we do not.
Thank you. Invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any agenda item any council member would like to place on the agenda at this time? Seeing none. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Councilman Pruski, so moved.
May I have a second?
Councilwoman Rodvian, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of April 20th, 2020, and May 1st, 4th, 6th, and 7th, 2020.
April 2020. The meeting was called to order by Chairman Allison Pickard at 7:00 PM. Ms. Fiedler gave the invocation and led the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar. May 1st, 2020. The meeting was called to order by Chairman Allison Pickard at 11:00 AM. Ms. Rodvian prayed for all affected during this pandemic, followed by Ms. Fiedler leading the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar. May 4th, 2020. The meeting was called to order by Chairman Allison Pickard at 11:00 AM. Ms. Hare gave a prayer of thankfulness, followed by Ms. Fiedler leading the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar. May 6th, 2020. The meeting was called to order by Chairman Allison Pickard at 9:00 AM. Ms. Lacy offered a moment of reflection, followed by Ms. Fiedler leading the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar. May 7th, 2020. The meeting was called to order by Chairman Allison Pickard at 1:00 PM. Ms. Pickard offered a prayer, followed by Ms. Fiedler leading the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 20th, 2020, and May 1st, 4th, 6th, and 7th, 2020?
Councilman Pruski, so moved.
May I have a second?
Councilwoman Rodvian, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of April 20th, 2020, May 1st, May 4th, May 6th, and May 7th, 2020 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number 3820, an emergency ordinance concerning residential rent increases during catastrophic health emergencies.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution number 1320, resolution appointing a member to the Anaronda County Ethics Commission. Resolution number 1420, resolution approving an appointment to the Board of Trustees for the Anaronda County Retirement and Pension System. Resolution number 1520, resolution proposing an amendment to the Charter of Anaronda County to allow for the use of an emergency ordinance to address a situation that needs immediate action.
Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to vote on resolutions number 13-20 and 14-20 this evening?
Councilwoman Rodvian, so moved.
May I have a second?
I guess Councilman Pruski's flag is tired, so a second, Councilwoman Lacy.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Apologies. Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to vote on resolution number?
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 13-20.
Resolution 1320, resolution appointing a member to the Anaronda County Ethics Commission.
Thank you. This is an administration resolution. Ms. Schultz and Ms. Laurie Meyer, are they with us? Oh, yes, they are. You have the floor.
Thank you. For the record, Kaylee Schultz from the Executive's Office. With me is Lori Blair Classmire from the Office of Law. Resolution 1320 approves the nomination of Daniel Semick, a Democrat, to the Ethics Commission. Mr. Semick is the individual who the council chose as one of their representatives to serve on Ethics Commission. He will serve his first term, which will expire on April 30th, 2024. This resolution simply approves the council's nomination, the county executive, which then had to come back to the council for confirmation.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council regarding this resolution? Ms. Hare? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Fiedler?
That's okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a quick question about voting. We started off with Councilwoman Rodvian going first and then changed to myself.
Yes, that's my apologies. I had two wrong vote sheets. And Ms. Rodvian will be voting first tonight.
Thank you.
Seeing no questions, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution number 1320.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 1320 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 14-20.
Resolution number 1420, resolution approving an appointment to the Board of Trustees for the Anaronda County Retirement and Pension System.
Thank you. This is also a resolution from the county executive. Ms. Schultz and Ms. Laurie Classmire are here. You have the floor.
Thank you. Once again, Kaylee Schultz from the County Executive's Office. With me is Lori Blair Classmire from the Office of Law. Resolution 1420 reappoints Mary Lou Hughes to the Retirement and Pension System Board of Trustees. Ms. Hughes is the Director of Trading and Operations of North Wealth Services. If reappointed, she will serve another three-year term ending April 30th, 2023. You should have her resume in front of you, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions of my colleagues? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution number 14-20.
Ms. Rodvian?
Apologies. Had a little trouble with my muting or my unmute. Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 1420 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 10-20.
Bill number 10-20, an ordinance concerning boards, commissions, and similar bodies' commission on disability issues.
Thank you. This is a county executive bill. I believe Ms. Schultz is here. You can introduce your panel, Ms. Schultz.
Thank you. Once again, Kaylee Schultz from the County Executive's Office. With me from the Department of Aging and Disabilities is the Director, Pam Jordan, and Joelle Ridgeway, who's the ADA Coordinator. And we also have Lori Blair Classmire from the Office of Law. The Commission on Disability Issues was established in the 1995 as a result of the hard work of dedicated advocates from the community who are known as the Action Group for Disability Issues. Since that time, the commission has provided valuable guidance to various administrations to create awareness about disability issues. The purpose of Bill 1020 is to create efficiencies in terms of membership and how the commission shall advance its recommendations, both consistent with current practices and expectations. Specifically, the bill accomplishes the following. It updates the language, consistent with people first. It changes language to individuals with disabilities from persons with disabilities. It changes the number of voting members from 21 to 15, making it easier to fill vacancies and advance the recommendations of the group. It memorializes the role of the ADA Coordinator in the Department of Aging and Disabilities as the liaison between the commission and the county executive and the Commission on Disability Issues, and confirm ADA coordinator will provide administrative assistance to the commission, which is codifying current practice. It staggers the terms of voting members to one-third each year and sets a maximum of two consecutive terms, consistent with other boards and commissions. It clarifies the circumstance under which a member of the commission can be named and also clarifies the powers and duties of the commission, again, current with, consistent with current practices. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. I see a question from Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Jessica Hare, District 7. I'm just curious. We did get some written testimony earlier today that pointed out the change that the commission would no longer provide any recommendations to the council. The thing would only go to the county executive. And I'm curious why we would want to take away that communication and that sort of collaborative?
Go, I'll let Pam Jordan go ahead and answer that question. Ms., you have the floor.
Director of Aging and Disabilities. So the way that the code is looked out and the way it would continue is if there's a member from the county council that is on the commission. In this case, we currently have Councilwoman Lacy is our representative on the commission. So there's plenty of opportunity for input and it just makes it better for Joelle to forward the recommendations consistent with the council person that is on the Commission on Disability Issues. So in short, I believe we have that covered very adequately.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none. We will now open the public hearing. We have received two submissions of written testimony on Bill 10-20, all of which have been reviewed by the council members and will be posted on our website for the public viewing of the testimony. Two were in opposition of Bill number 1020 and zero were in support of Bill number 1020. The public hearing on Bill number 1020 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 10-20.
Bill number 1020, an ordinance concerning boards, commissions, and similar bodies' commission on disability issues.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to vote against this this evening because although I appreciate the efficiency argument that the administration is making, I am concerned about the, the change in terms of the direct contact between the council versus the administration. I think that's a legitimate point that's been raised. I also am not in favor of the idea that we're decreasing this board. I certainly can appreciate the difficulties that the department has had and the administration has had in terms of filling vacancies on the boards and commissions, but I don't think that the solution to that is to simply decrease the size and then take out the opportunity for more folks to participate. So I'll be voting no this evening.
Thank you. I don't see any further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 1020.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill number 1020 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 1120.
Bill number 1120, an ordinance concerning public safety speed monitoring systems.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski, you were the lead sponsor on this bill. Would you like to introduce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. Councilman Andrew Pruski. For those of you that don't remember, we actually had a work session, a whole length discussion on this bill, but I wanted to highlight a few things as a reminder to folks. First of all, speed monitoring devices are a valuable tool for public safety as well as workers throughout Anaronda County. It has shown a drastic reduce of accidents, fatalities, and property damage. Our recent efforts that this council did was to implement red light cameras. We should use every tool or resource in the toolbox. In addition, if any of you had a question about whether this would be included in this year's budget, the answer is going to be no, because it's something that we haven't implemented yet. And also, this is enabling legislation, which I will look forward to implementation when it's brought forward. So again, I don't want to highlight too much more. I do want to thank Auditor, though. I think you gave a great letter and reference about how the program is currently being implemented. There are numerous restrictions that the state puts on. There are certain areas and limits and conditions, so it's not something that's completely widespread. For those of you that forgot about the work session, and I will leave it at that, Madam Chair. I just ask for support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would the administration like to respond?
Good evening, Madam Chair. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the virtual table is Major Pastman from the police and Ms. Lori Blair Classmire from Office of Law. I'll just echo the sentiments of Councilman Pruski. This issue, we discussed a while ago at a work session. The administration is comfortable with the bill. This does not, the, the administration did not include these cameras in the upcoming budget and will look forward to the opportunity of putting them in place at the appropriate time pending council approval.
Thank you. Are there, are there any questions from the council? Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. Major Pastman, this question is for you. In jurisdictions that do have speed cameras in school zones, is there a significant difference after those cameras are installed, to your knowledge, and the amount of speeding that's taking place in those zones?
Yeah, I mean, I have heard from the jurisdictions that do have them that there has been a significant decrease. Remember that these cameras do have signage requirements. So for signs posted on these roads, warning people that the cameras are even there. So those signs, along with the cameras being there, have had reductions in speeding along those school zones.
Okay, thank you. And if I could just ask one follow-up question, Amanda Fiedler, District 5. Do you have a rough estimate on how often we have officers monitoring speeds in the school zones?
I don't have a number to give you. I mean, routinely, we have officers running radar in schools and we get complaints typically in school zones. You're looking at those 25 mile an hour zones, up to 35 mile an hour zones, and we do get complaints, especially at the beginning of school. We have officers that will be out there monitoring the traffic and running radar. Just to remind everybody that school's back in session during those times.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Madam Chair, if I might interrupt very quickly, just a reminder that anybody who is speaking should state their name every time they speak for the people who are listening in with no video.
Thank you. Allison Pickard, District 2. Mr. Volkey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District. Major Pastman, I guess this question's for you as well, in similar vein as to what Councilwoman Fiedler was asking about, is issuing in school zones so that we know the scope of this problem?
I don't have that information. I'm sorry, Major Pastman, Anaronda County Police, I do not have that information with me.
Okay. And then just follow up, we're in the midst of this COVID-19 situation, Major Past. Again, Nathan Volkey. In terms of when school is in session versus when it's not, obviously now would typically be an in-session period of time, but school's not in session. So how would you classify that from the police department's standpoint in terms of when you're enforcing this? Is it going to be year-round enforcement, whether school is in or not, or is it only when school is in session?
Well, the cameras are only allowed to be operated during certain times of the day. And they only are allowed to be operated Monday through Friday from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Those are throughout the entire year, so school doesn't necessarily need to be in session. It may be a holiday or maybe the summer, but those are the times that the law allows the cameras to operate.
So again, Nathan Volkey, Major Past. So you're, if I'm understanding correctly, it doesn't matter whether school's in or not? If it's the school zone, the enforcement will happen regardless of whether it was in session or not?
Yes, Monday through Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Jessica Hare, District 7. Major Pastman, I just wanted to follow up. If I understood what you said before, the sign would be posted before anyone gets to the camera. So no, this is not a surprise. Everyone's going to have advanced notice. Turn up to a school zone, there's a speed camera down. This isn't going to jump out at somebody and they're going to go, huh, I never knew that was there.
Correct. Major Pastman, County Police, correct. That's, the signs are required by law.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Volkey, are you have another question? Okay. Thank you. I actually have, have relied and worked with Traffic Patrol from both Northern and Eastern District. This has been an issue in my school zones. In the Rippling Woods area, in the Old Mill High School area, it's been quite a problem. And I've been grateful that police are willing to monitor those parents dropping off children, but I'm, I think speed cameras could do the job more gently. So I look forward to voting for this bill and to a time when we can actually bring them on board. Do we have any other questions or comments regarding Bill 11-20 at this time? Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. In general, I typically like speed cameras. It's just a little bit too much of big government. However, in the last year, district has had a significant amount of phone calls for speeding in school zones. Jumper's Whole Road comes to mind. That's kind of has a very high-speed issue. It's like a freeway sometimes. And I know that the county spends a lot of money on traffic calming devices in school areas. And I don't want our officers sitting doing speed monitoring when they could be used elsewhere in the county, especially when they're frequent school, schools that need the monitoring. So I will be supporting this bill. However, if anything at the state level changes that would give kind of free rein for speed cameras anywhere and everywhere in the county, I would look to introduce legislation to reduce that in Anaronda County, but I will be supporting this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. So I echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Fiedler for the most part, but I think our conclusions are different. I certainly am concerned about certainly am concerned about the extent to which we're sort of looking at everything to try to put cameras everywhere, and that's been a trend so far this year in terms of this council and decisions to place cameras in certain places. And while I reported them on buses, because I think that's a major issue, and you know, there have been some red light camera legislation, there has been that's come down. I think that one, the concern I have is the lack of measurable data that supports that this is actually going to, A, solve a problem, because we don't necessarily know the scope of the problem. Largely, this is anecdotal. You know, we get constituent issues where folks reach out to us and say this is a major concern, and it's a concern to anyone who has lost someone because someone has been speeding in a school zone, or it's a concern to really anyone that has school-aged children. But I think that the other issue is speeding is a concern, period, end of story, wherever it may be. So until I can see some data that suggests that both this is a major issue in the county and that, in fact, these cameras are going to decrease that problem, I can't vote in support of something, because I'm looking for objective, data-driven metrics that show us that what we are doing is solving a problem, and that's yet to be shown with this legislation.
Thank you. Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilwoman Rodvian, District 6. I just want to express, I am very understanding of my colleague, Councilman Volkey's thoughts about this, but because this legislation is simply enabling legislation, we still do have the opportunity going forward to look at data for specific situations before we, you know, before we actually put cameras in place. So while I think I have some of the same concerns you do, I'm going to fall on the other side of the line for this, for this piece of legislation.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Same concerns. I agree with sort of all points all around. I will say on this one, I'm going to err on the side of the safety of the children and to take Major Passman's comments that he has heard that it does reduce speeds. And for now, I'm going to take that as enough. I am comforted by the fact that people get warnings ahead of time as well, so that they are not caught off guard in terms of Big Brother watching. So I will be voting yes, but I am going to watch this one closely.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. We have received one submission of written testimony on Bill 1120, all of which have been reviewed by the council members and will be posted on our website for public viewing. Of the testimony received, the one was in support of Bill number 1120. The public hearing on Bill number 1120 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 1120.
Bill number 1120, an ordinance concerning public safety speed monitoring systems.
Is there any further discussion? Thank you. Madam Secretary, call the roll on Bill number 1120.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill 1120 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 12-20.
Bill number 1220, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, adequate school facilities, workforce housing.
Thank you. Ms. Lacy is the sponsor of this. You have the floor, Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Chairwoman Pickard. This bill, as you all know, is a bill to, that was inspired based on a single project. It's in my district that applied for, the developer applied for low-income housing tax credits from the state of Maryland. The state, in its process of making awards of those tax credits, does not look at the construction or development timeline that, in the particular county where it makes the award. This developer, at the time they applied, all three schools that would apply to the development of eight townhomes in Jessup were considered open under the then-enforced school utilization chart. They won their award, and we passed Bill 8419, and in doing that, we closed Mead Middle School for purposes of development. Now, a developer of market-rate housing may be able to wait out a closure for up to six years, at which point they're vested and have the ability to go ahead with their, even if schools are still closed at that point. Theory being, both you can't overly interfere with a person's property rights in developing that property, but also that the county needs sufficient time to gather the resources and plan as necessary, as does the school board, for additional students in system. Well, if you happen to be a developer applying for low-income housing tax credits, and you are lucky enough to be one of the few who are selected in a competitive application process, then are on a clock, a three-clock, to get to occupancy of the project that you're building. That's a shorter clock than most can actually accomplish in our county with our particular development process and its steps. Not only does a developer on the low-income housing tax credit awardee have to meet that three-year schedule, if they don't, they are further penalized severely by being barred from participating or applying for these tax credits for future projects. So back in, toward last fall, I was made aware that this specific project, the developer's name is Woda Cooper Companies, Inc. The name of the project is Brock Bridge Landing. And so I was informed last fall that our Bill 8419 had closed the school, and that was putting this project in jeopardy. The developer came to me to ask me to try to put in a bill similar to what I put in for Mead Village, which was my first bill back in the beginning or early 29th, and it received a unanimous vote of support and made a limited exception to the adequate public facilities ordinance, so that Mead Village could not only get 200 units of affordable housing renovated, but also add 24 more units, because they had the funding, the investment, the county had already supported it. And of course, Mead Village, you'll recall, is run by the Housing Commission of Anaronda County. So I thought back to that, and I thought, you know, that was okay for Mead Village, in part because the actual commission or agency of the county that is, that is the landlord, that is responsible for that project. But what Woda Cooper was asking me to do was different. We're talking about a private developer, and they're in the same boat with certain other private developers, which I initially thought was pretty much anybody doing workforce housing. It took me a while to learn and understand that the low-income housing tax credit portion of developers of affordable housing is a smaller subset than workforce. And since I know the six of you, my colleagues, are with the bill and the work session that we had about the bill, there was initial confusion, because as it read, it appeared to apply to all workforce housing generally. There will be amendments that are offered at the appropriate time to make absolutely clear that this bill is only intended to apply to projects that have been awarded low-income housing tax credits by the state. What I did is I thought, my colleagues unanimously supported making this funding possible for the Mead Village renovation and adding 24 more units, and they might unanimously support a bill requesting to do the same just for this Brock Bridge Landing project. But that's not the bill that I want to bring, and I want everyone to know that the developer did not ask me to bring the bill that I brought. I decided that rather than have my advocacy efforts be targeted at one little project at a time, that we could, as a council, take a step where there's applicable to a somewhat larger circle of projects, 50 units or fewer, but not the whole universe of workforce housing. So just in case anybody has a lingering question about that, that's a question I think we need to have a longer discussion about another day. And you should also all be aware that there's a work group working on our adequate public facilities ordinance, specifically on the school side. And so in developing this bill, I had the idea of what could we do to take one more step? So I'm not bringing a series of these bills, but so that all over the county, if you're talking about a small number of units, and this number 50 is rounded up from Brock Bridge's 38, but it is just big enough to capture the smallest set of projects that are, that receive Y-Tech Low-Income Housing Tax Awards, are projects, the majority of them, to really make even more of an impact. You know, they have many more units, and that's not what I'm talking about. I looked at Brock Bridge's situation, the problem for the Brock Bridge Landing project and the timing, and I thought, first, it's unfair, in the sense of, at the time they applied, the schools were open. And you're talking about developers who have to watch their, their risk and their margin very carefully on these kinds of projects because of the unique type of funding and purpose that they're trying to meet. So as I looked at it, you could solve the problem, not just for Brock Bridge, but to help mitigate the risk for anybody else who's developing under the state tax credit program, by giving them an option, by saying, it's okay if at the time you apply, the schools were open under our school utilization chart, or if at the time in the development process, when you would normally test for adequate public facilities, the school, some school may have closed, perhaps multiple changes have occurred in the, during the development timeframe, but so long as the population, the student enrollment, plus what is anticipated for planning purposes, with that new development proposed, the two of them combined are less than a buffer, then they should be able to go forward. And so that was my idea, a 3% buffer for entry and middle school, and a 5% buffer for our high schools. So we don't have to have more bills drip by drip by drip, and agree that overall, the number of students created by this small number of housing units can easily be absorbed into our school system. And since our school system also has a role to play in redistricting, or, you know, figuring out that there are many avenues from which we can approach capacity issues, if there are any, then particular one, I don't think there's any quantifiable harm that I've been able to quantify, or that from the people I've spoken with, that anyone can quantify. But there's definitely a measurable benefit for families who will be able to live in these new, these new residences. They're built to high-quality standards, and they may give folks access to schools in other parts of the county they could never otherwise attain. And I believe that's a good thing, and so that's why, at the appropriate time, I will ask for your support for the amendments that the administration will bring, and ultimately, your support voting yes on the entire bill. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, would the administration like to weigh in? Mr. Barron?
Be happy to, Madam Chair. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the virtual table is Ms. Lori Rhodes from Office of Planning and Zoning, Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from Office of Law, and I believe we're bringing Mr. Shaknovich, yep, there he is, forward from schools in the virtual audience. We also have Ms. Kathy Koch from ACDS and from Housing, Mr. Cliff Martin. I want to thank the sponsor first for the work that she has put in on this bill. The administration is supportive of the bill as long as we get the amendments that Ms. Lacy referenced. I appreciate the work that the sponsor of the bill put in with the administration to clarify, restrict, and correct certain parts of the bill, to make sure it achieves the policy goal Madam Councilwoman articulated. The administration and this council have worked hard to address housing issues in this county. Bill 2-20 is, is very, I think, in my opinion, a small bite at, at an issue that's quite technical relating to the reality of how the timing of these tax credit developments are financed. I think it's important to be, as Mr. Volkey said on a previous bill, objective and data-driven that relates to what the, the bill is actually doing. So to give you some context, the low-income housing tax credit projects have three years from their award date to be built without risk of losing tax credit funding, as Ms. Lacy referenced. They have three years to get through that planning and permitting process. So it's a very short timeline. There also aren't a lot of them awarded every year statewide, and even many fewer here in the county. In 2018, two new construction projects were approved in Anaronda County. One of them, I believe, was the one Ms. Lacy referenced, which was a housing authority renovation. And in 2019, only one was approved, and that was a senior elderly and moderate means project, and that would not be impacted by the bill. So the amendment that the administration will be offering several amendments at the appropriate time, but we do think it's important that the bill is clear that it is applicable only to projects that have been awarded these low-income tax credit developments. So you'll see that amendment at the appropriate time. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions, and we'll, we'll discuss the amendments at the appropriate time.
Mr. Pruski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate having you here. I think first, I want to acknowledge, because it's a bill that's brought up a lot of emails and people reaching out, and so I want to raise the 326 of correspondence that people have sent in, and have read all them, and I appreciate reaching out. I do want to go over a couple of things, though, that I think there's some mischaracterization occurring with this bill, and I even had to dig deeper, but obviously, the auditor's letter and speaking with the sponsor and the administration helped me clear my mind. But I think people have a hard time reasoning on the number of projects that are actually built regarding this. And the reason why it's not profitable for developers to do this, and that's why they're state-funding, for one. Number two, I was kind of taken back, particularly because I know someone who's died from the virus, that people emailed me and said that workforce housing causes the virus. So I just want to make absolutely clear that this has nothing to do with that, that this is about a policy decision that the council is working on, related to whether you allow workforce housing or not. Also, I think there's a misconception that's being put out there by folks, that there is no adequate facilities test, that if your district is overcrowded like mine already, that projects will occur, and that's not the case. So I think, you know, I appreciate the sponsor kind of highlighting some of those pieces, but I also wanted to highlight that there were some things that were kind of brought forward that I thought that either weren't correct or inaccurate. So just wanted to make sure that, you know, when we go over this bill, we're talking about workforce housing, there's conditions met, there's a limited number of projects, and certainly looking at the facts of the bill. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, oh, you're muted.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Ms. Fiedler, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. This question is for Alex Shagnovich. In the system, we, for our free and reduced meal schools, the higher that ratio is in a school, is it fair to say the greater the challenges are for the faculty and staff to assist those students?
I'd say it's fair to say, to Alex Shagnovich, Chief Operating Officer for Anarundel County Schools, I'd say it's fair to say that those youngsters do require more support. Those schools are typically funded and staffed at a more robust level than some of our other schools.
Thank you. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Just a quick follow-up, and I don't know if you want to confirm this, but I pulled up data in the MarylandPublicSchools.org website, and the 2018-2019 school year, Mead Middle School was sixty percent free and reduced meals. Do you know that to be accurate, or is there an updated current chart?
Alex Shagnovich, Chief Operating Officer. Unfortunately, I don't have that information at my disposal, although I do know that the most current information is effective the end of October of 2019. That is when the test is done in terms of farm eligibility. I just don't know if the website that you're referencing has that more current data on it or not.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Jessica, District Seven. I understand the concern that the sponsor has, and would like these, and the sponsor would like these projects to go forward, but I'm a little concerned that we are looking at this problem from the wrong side, and we're trying to fix it on the back end instead of address the underlying cause. And I don't know if this is a question for the sponsor, or perhaps for our planning, if Ms. Rhodes wants to jump in, but it seems to me like perhaps a better avenue for this would be to have these projects vest seats at the time they make their application, as opposed to at the time they receive the tax credits. Hold those seats, planning and zoning can account for them in the charts. And then if the projects are not awarded the tax credits, the seats could be released. If they are, the seats have already been accounted for. It just seems to me like then we're not constantly, I mean, I think a lot of the sentiment in the community is that we've gotten behind on school capacity and infrastructure and things like that, and we ought to be trying to come up with ways to mitigate that on the front end, instead of trying to constantly make exceptions or play catch-up on the back end. If there's anyone who could address that, that would be awesome.
Does the administration want to weigh in, Ms. Rhodes?
So Lori Rhodes, Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, Office of Planning and Zoning. As you are aware, we have a work group that we put together. We're going to be looking at APF schools, and that's one of the issues we have to look at. But as Councilwoman, woman, I cannot, I'm sorry, Lacy indicated that, you know, there's timing of when these applications are filed, there's a period in which things have to happen, and that doesn't always coincide with planning and zoning processes. So that's something that we would have to explore as part of the work group, to see if that actually works in the realm in which you articulated it. And that's something that we're going to be looking at.
Jessica Hare, District Seven. Just one quick follow-up. So is this, is this particular item on your list, or can we add it to the list for the work group, or you're saying this is actually already on the work group?
Yes, I believe this is on the list, but I would be happy to look at any of your questions. I know Steve Kaisigler has had maybe one or two meetings, so we're early on in the work group, but I want to look at this comprehensively as it relates to when the state gets these applications, how we view them, and to look at this more comprehensively instead of assuming that this is how this process works, when we don't actually know those grants are awarded, and how we look at it from our process standpoint. It has to be looked at on both sides in order to give the appropriate response to your concern.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say, first off, kind of echoing something that I think Councilman Pruski sort of alluded to, which is, we've gotten a lot of emails about this. And before I talk too much about this particular bill, I just want to address some of the things that I saw in those comments. Out of, I think it was actually three hundred and eighty-eight people total who have contacted us through, I believe, twelve PM today, when the testimony was shut down for accepting it that way. And then we've also gotten emails on top of that. By my count, I think three hundred and eighty-four people were opposed to it, three people supported it, and one person had no position. So we have reviewed what you have sent. We are aware of the positions that people have sent in, particularly those talking about Oak Hill Elementary School. I actually saw some friends of mine who had emailed there, so Lindsay and Tyler are there, and you're watching. I did see your emails, and I know that they can. So that said, I just would like to address for everybody this concern that somehow we're trying to sneak things through with this COVID-19 pandemic, and that we're not trying to listen to people. I just really want to make it abundantly clear to everyone that, frankly, I don't think I've really any bills that we've ever gotten this much testimony from in the roughly eighteen months that this council has been together. So we have gotten a lot of testimony on this, and we hear you. So I just want to make that apparent upfront. And for everybody who's saying that they're there and they're watching, and they're waiting to see how we vote, yes, please do, and please keep watching, and please keep engaging with us. With that said, turning to the specifics of the bill, there was a report that I was able to take a look at that showed the impact of this bill on other schools in the county. And one school in particular that caught my eye is in my district, which is Solly Elementary School, currently significantly over capacity. And this bill would effectively, well, it would add about ten students to that. Now, I know that that may seem like not a lot of students, but in the aggregate, when I looked at how much this would impact any potential schools, it was well over two hundred additional students to the school system, and that aggregate impact certainly adds up. So I'm really sensitive to this idea that we're going to add more students in. And in fact, as everybody probably knows, I was the one person who voted against the most recent school utilization chart, because I think that the way we did the process is not right, and it was using bad data. And I'm actually working on a bill right now that I hope all of you will support, that will hopefully fix that. But the point that I'm trying to make with this is, I think that there, as Councilwoman Harris said, a lot of issues. I think the issues start well in advance of sort of the planning process, and when these things are coming into the pipeline, and we need to be doing a better job. But, you know, I mean, turning back to Solly Elementary for a moment, in my district, in the budget, that's been defunded and pushed out another three years in favor of other parts of the county where it looks like there's more capacity needed. So to the extent that we're doing that, I think it's really a concern that then we're turning around in with this bill, when we know we have this massive backlog in school construction, and we've got capacity issues, and we can't even build schools that we need to build, let alone, you know, some that we'd want to build, that we're going to be doing things that will add additional students to the schools. So at the current iteration of this bill, I am strongly opposed to it. And I'll have to take a look at what the amendments are and how they change this bill, but I'm very sympathetic to the concerns that have been sent in by the community. Thank you.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, or Chairwoman, Councilwoman Rodvian for District Six. I just want to start off by fully disclosing that I'm a teacher for Anarundel County Public Schools. So I'm very sympathetic to the concerns of crowding, overcrowding in the schools and class size. That said, over the course of my decade working in the public schools, I've also taught many, many students who were housing insecure, meaning they didn't necessarily have a regular home to go to, for the very reasons that this bill arises, because of the extreme shortage of affordable housing in Anarundel County. Had a handful of homeless students as well. And given the choice, would I rather have a class that included one or two more students, or would I prefer that students that don't have housing continue to stay housing insecure? It's not even a question. There's just, hands down, I would much rather see my students and their families get secure and reliable housing. I think that the scale of the lack of affordable housing is maybe not as apparent, because I do think it's hidden from the general public's view. And so I got some data, which, you know, sometimes data can be illuminating when you're not, even when you're not hearing individual stories, but there are eighteen thousand eight hundred and forty-five families on the public housing waiting list. And that's families which are made up of fifty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven people. Now, those people are living in our county, and going to the, and their children are going to the schools already. They just have a place to live. They don't have a regular place to live. We have ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-five on the voucher waiting list. And just to clarify, I think there's often a misunderstanding about housing vouchers. The vouchers do not necessarily cover the entire rent payment. Sometimes they can just provide a small supplement. And so even with a voucher, there may be, you know, a great need for affordable housing. The waiting list for families on, the waiting list for families waiting to get into public housing is three to five years. So if you are applying for a space in public housing, you're going to wait three to five years before you can find a place to live. The wait time to get a voucher, which may just be a small amount of support for rent, is seven to ten years. So if this doesn't underscore enough what the need is for affordable housing in this county, I don't know what will. I also want to make clear, because I've had a couple, I've had a handful of emails that implied, you know, that somehow we were, you know, anyone who supported this legislation was supported by developers. And in my election campaign in 2018, I did not take a single dollar from developers for that very reason. I wanted to make sure that my positions were not clouded by interests of development, but would be fully representing interests of the people and my constituents. And I know in my district, District Six, which includes Indianapolis, includes the largest amount of public housing anywhere in the county, there is still a shortage. I think that this makes a very reasonable and very small concession when you're talking about, you know, imagine an elementary school that has four classes of, we'll just pick a grade, third grade, four classes of twenty-five students of third graders. And you would be allowed to go up to one hundred and three percent, assuming that the students would be distributed evenly across grade levels. That would be a maximum of three additional students for that third-grade class. So you'd have one that remained at twenty-five students, and three more that would go to twenty-six, if I'm calculating this correctly. Obviously, that would happen at multiple grade levels. There's, obviously, you know, we do have schools that are crowded, but the students that don't have housing are in our county already. We can't, you know, pretend that they're somewhere else. They're here, they're in our schools. They very well may move into a new home in something that's built, and not even change schools, but simply have a reliable place to live. So I wanted to make that clear, because I think there was a lot of misunderstanding about what this bill did. The very small push-in that it allows for a builder who's willing to dive into this, you know, really niche sort of development, low-income housing, I think we're making a very reasonable concession. And for the sake of any of my students who may not have reliable housing, I hope that these thirty-eight additional units in Jessup will give someone a place, you know, give someone their very own room, and their very own living room, and their very own apartment to call home.
Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I greatly appreciate Councilwoman Rodvian's comments and support, and also Councilman Pruski's. I wanted to address Councilman Volkey's concern about Solly Elementary School. The report to which you referred was actually, as I read it, unless I'm misreading it, the line for Solly Elementary School says that that school is at ninety-eight percent of its state-rated capacity. So the analysis that this report was trying to make clear is that if you put a project the size of fifty units or under, but say it was fifty units, in the Solly District, that it would be estimated to yield ten additional students, and that that math would bring Solly Elementary up to ninety-nine point four percent of its capacity. So under my bill, if Solly Elementary School is at ninety-eight percent at the time that a developer applies for the YTEC credits, then they wouldn't be able, if it's at ninety-eight percent, they wouldn't be able to have a school capacity unless later, at the actual time of testing for adequate public facilities, perhaps that percentage will have gone down and made room for those ten students. But as I read this line, it's on page four of the document, I believe that we both have. A valid one.
Yeah, I also wanted to note, Oak Hill is already at a hundred percent, so it's already past any threshold and buffer for any new development. It is closed. As, so some, we did get some emails about specific schools. I think there's a couple things. We have reams and reams and reams of paper and stacks of reports about everything from school capacity to affordable housing, environmental regulations to land use in this county. We've not been friendly to affordable housing, or obtainable housing, or whatever you want to call it. In fact, since nineteen sixty-three, this county has only built one thousand six hundred and sixty-two family units with YTEC tax credits. That's fifty-seven years' worth of attainable affordable housing via these tax credits that have made their way to Anarundel County. We have over three hundred thousand units of housing. So if you do the math, we have a miniscule amount of this kind of housing. And if you, the last family facility built was at Burger Place in Odenton, and forty-eight units of apartments there. We don't get these very often, even on a good day. And Anarundel County has made it extremely hard. Nobody wants to even attempt to build this housing in our district, because our zoning code puts up incredible barriers. And we have districts that fight, fight against it. So we have a, we have a housing issue. We have students in our schools in insecure housing situations, or they're paying way more than they can actually afford, and working two and three jobs to stay housed. Therefore, their quality of life and their ability to be engaged and form parents is lacking, because they are housing insecure and are paying fifty percent of their income to stay in an apartment. So when we step back from this issue, there's a lot of data, there is a lot of data, and I would be happy to sit down with anybody who wants to go through it. It needs, it actually needs a pretty big meta-analysis of all of it, to really tackle this issue and take into consider land use, affordable housing, environmental regulations, and everything else, so that we can actually craft policies that make sense for this county and our balance. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Fiedler.
Madam Chair, again, I apologize for interrupting, but reminder to everybody to introduce themselves, mention their name when they speak. I don't know that listeners knew that was you speaking.
That was Allison Pickard from District Two. Ms. Fiedler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. And this is a question for the school system. I know there were a lot of emails that came in regarding Oak Hill Elementary. Some of the confusion did come from initial analysis that said Oak Hill would be open under this bill. That was since corrected, and Oak would not be open so long as it stays at or over ninety-eight percent capacity. However, in the Fifth District, this would open Severna Park Middle School, based on the current school utilization chart, and any elementary school that feeds- And any elementary school that feeds into Severna Park Middle School that is open, is that correct?
Chief Officer, yes, that's correct. So Oak Hill Elementary School, if you take the law as proposed and apply it against the chart that's currently in force that was adopted by Bill 8419, every school within the Severna Park feeder district, inclusive of the Midland High School and all of the elementary schools except for Oak Hill. So you're absolutely correct. Oak Hill would remain closed. Everything else in Severna Park either is already open or, in the case of Severna Park Middle School, would become open for this unique subset of housing types.
Thank you. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. May I ask a follow-up or continue?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I know a majority of the emails that came in, at least the ones that I saw, did pertain to the fifth district. And I've had a unique opportunity to attend monthly meetings in Severna Park and hear from parents at schools that are over capacity. My own children go to a school that is over capacity. And this council passed unanimously a bill that closed schools in middle and elementary school once they hit 95% capacity because we creating that buffer so that our families in our districts wouldn't be experiencing what my family and other families across the county are experiencing. So if I, if I just for argument's sake, take my district out of the equation, I find it hypocritical for me to sit here and protect the families in my own district by supporting a 95% capacity, but then turning around and saying it's okay to do that to families and children in other districts that are attending schools that are at or just over capacity. I applaud Councilwoman Rodvian. I don't know what every teacher in the county would say. I don't want any child to be homeless. That's not my intent with these comments. I am certainly sensitive to the fact that we do have a housing need in our county. But I don't think that we should be prioritizing housing over education and families and schools that are at capacity right now. I think that we need to approach this in a different way. I support what my colleague Councilwoman Ror stated about looking at this through a different lens. I understand that this is not an ill-intended bill, but I think it's a bill that has poor, poor outcomes for the schools that it's going to impact. So I will not be supporting this bill this evening, nor will I be supporting any of the amendments because I just don't think this bill can get in any kind of shape that I can support.
Allison Pickard from District Two, Chairwoman. I think we have, we need to, we have to clarify some things when we talk about school capacity because 95% is not 5%. The school rated capacity is intended for us to utilize schools to 100%. And in some schools are being used to 110 and 120%. We have $148 million in the capital budget to continue to deal with our aging schools and our capacity issues. We just built a $140 million high school, not at capacity. So when we talk about capacity, yes, this council voted to make, to close schools when they're at 95%. The state recognizes that across the county, we're under 90% capacity in this county for seats. So Severna Park School might open up with this at 98%, but you neighbor, you know, there's a neighboring jurisdiction that's middle school is less than 80% capacity. We could take an elementary school if school capacity was really the issue. And Broadneck Elementary is over capacity because they refuse to redistrict it with Cape St. Clair. We have a lot of terms that we're throwing around in this debate that need better definitions and a better clear understanding because we spend spending a lot of taxpayer dollars on capacity and building new schools that I think taxpayers should expect us to be using every nook and cranny and corner of them to educate our students in the highest quality way we can. With that, we have, still have to get to the public hearing. Do we have any other, does the administration have anything they want to weigh in on?
No, Madam Chair. Just at the appropriate time, would like to talk about the amendments.
Okay. Ms. Fiedler.
Amanda Fiedler, District Five, just want to thank you for the lesson on capacity. My comments stand.
We will now open the public hearing. We have received 377 submissions of written testimony on Bill Number 12-20, all of which have been reviewed by the council members and will be added on our website for public viewing. Of the testimony received, 377 were in opposition to Bill Number 12-20 and 10 were in support of Bill Number 10-20. Public hearing on Bill Number 10, 12-20, excuse me, is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 12-20.
Bill Number 12-20, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development Adequate Facilities Workforce Housing.
Is there any further discussion before we get into amendments? Madam Secret, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This technical amendment correctly identifies the portions of the county code that apply to specific exemptions from the state, from the test for adequacy of school facilities.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Lacy.
Is there a second?
Councilwoman Rodvian, second.
Would the administration like to take the lead on this?
This one is technical, sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. This amendment is technical. It's important to cite to the right parts of the code.
Is there any discussion or questions from my colleagues on Amendment Number One? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
As it's only a technical amendment, aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Thank you. And I will wait for the amendment to come on screen before reading in the amendment.
Oh, excuse me.
No, that's okay. Amendment Number Two. This amendment allows residential development that is funded in part by low-income tax credits to be eligible for an exemption from adequacy of public facilities tests for schools instead of development that qualifies as workforce housing.
May I have a motion to adopt?
Lacy, so moved.
May I have a second?
Councilwoman Rodvian, second.
Mr. Barron, would you like to introduce this amendment?
Be happy to, Madam Chair. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. In my initial comments, I mentioned working with the sponsor to clarify, restrict, and correct certain parts of the bill. This amendment helps to restrict projects that would be eligible, making it clear that only the projects that receive the low-income tax credits would be eligible for this, under this bill. As I also mentioned, in 2019, there was one project in the county that would have qualified except that it was for an elderly of moderate means. So it would not have been subject to this. Also, in 2018, there were two. So that should help alleviate some concerns in the public that this could run wild. So with that, we hope you adopt this amendment.
Is there any further discussion about Amendment Number Two? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number Two is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three. This amendment requires that the property be encumbered by deed restrictions that, one, the units be restricted to occupancy by eligible households under this paragraph for at least 30 years. And, two, at least 60% of rental units be occupied by a household with an income that does not exceed 60% of the median income adjusted for household size for the Baltimore primary metropolitan statistical area.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Lacy, so moved.
May I have a second?
Rodvian, second.
Mr. Barron, this is an administration amendment, correct?
Correct. Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. Again, back to my comments, this is a protection to be placed on the bill that would, I think I've said it on previous bills, it would prevent a switcheroo that these projects must aim for the purpose that was stated so that a developer wouldn't be able to take advantage of this and transition these and, or convert these units into market rate units. Ask that you move the amendment.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. I don't confess to be any kind of expert on affordable housing, but we've definitely had a few bills in front of us that have dealt with it. One of my understanding, I thought, at least on these credits, is that when you get the credits, that this requirement already exists. Is that true or is this requirement not already part of the funding for these affordable housing projects?
Madam Secretary, can we ask that Ms. Kathy Koch be brought in to this to give us the answer to that? It's a good question, Councilman Volkey.
Certainly give us one. Oh, I believe Ms. Koch is now on panel.
Ms. Koch, you have the floor.
Projects that are funded with the loan.
Excuse me, my apologies, Ms. Koch. Can you start again? You were muted when you began.
Kathy Koch, Executive Director for Arundel Community Development Services. Yes, the projects that are funded through low-income housing tax credit are projects that have a covenant restricted on the property for the funding, reflects the funding and the requirements of the funding.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey again. So then just to follow up, what would be the effect of this amendment as it pertains to these projects if the restrictions are?
It ensures that in exchange for the zoning flexibility that the county is giving, that you ensure that those requirements are there and are monitored and are met in case there's any changes that happens with the funding or ownership of the project.
Thank you.
Ms. Schuet?
Okay, sorry, that took a minute. I also just wanted to clarify that although that may be a requirement in the process of the tax credit process, it's, this is, this is a recorded instrument that comes afterwards that is also required workforce housing. So that, the requirement of the recorded deed restriction is one that we have, generally speaking, and is just really reiterated here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schuet. Is there any further questions? Mr. Pruski?
Madam Chair, I'm not an attorney, but I play one on TV or Zoom. But my understanding is this also protects the council and others to have this as part of the record. If this were to change the state code or the application changes, we keep this in our code. So we can update it, you know, delete it, manage it. So I also think it, while even it's a reiteration, it makes the standard. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other regarding Amendment Number Three? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll Amendment Number Three.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number Three is adopted.
Bill Number 12-20, as amended, will be heard on May 26, 2020. At this time, is there any other business to be brought before the county council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Councilman Pruski, so moved.
May I have a second?
Volkey, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The county council is adjourned until 1:00 PM tomorrow, May 12, 2020. Have a great.